Thank you for those in person and online. The full meeting to order. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic which stands one more nation than we forgot. And in this call, with the routine of justice for all. All right, Kim. You.
All right, I'd like to ask for consent motion. To the president of the board game agenda. Sorry. Motion made to approve the board agenda for October seventh. Hold on there.
Hi.
Any votes? All right, then. Consent motion through the board being minutes of the September ninth meeting. Motion made to approve the minutes of September ninth. Okay.
I think that should be because it wasn't there.
Yeah, okay. Welcome back from France. All in favor? All right. Any votes? Jeff? Evening. Jeff, sorry.
I was just gonna say, yeah.
Organizing the game.
All right, let's, let's do a little. Jana, if you would go first.
Hi, everybody.
Hi, Jana.
Hi.
Musical rehearsals are in full switch. Waiting for our fall production of Mamma Mia. We have completed all of act one and have started to work on the second act. Tomorrow, we will be performing one of the songs from the show in the foyer as the community members come in to vote. So if you would like to see us start by around six thirty, the show will be on November fifteenth and sixteenth. So stay tuned for ticket sales. There will be other musical performance during the vote tomorrow evening. We had a very successful homecoming last week. Students of all grades enjoyed the pep assemblies, which featured performances from the pep band as well as a student led band. The homecoming dance was well attended and the students had a great time. And JHS, NHS, and some seniors combined to make the spear walk at the Temple Hill Cemetery successful. This year had the highest turnout in Temple Hill's history. The Duggerers Club is holding a toy drive starting next week. They're looking for new or gently used play food, sensory books, letter toys, counting toys, and any other sensory items. Drop off boxes will be located in the main lobby and the MSHS library. The Duggerers Club is also raising funds for the Hurricane relief. Students will be collecting money outside the cafeteria at lunch, and the faculty are welcome to pay one dollar to wear T-shirts on Tuesdays. The Pilot Afro Caribbean Percussion and Dance Club has been meeting for about a month now. We are making good progress in our study of the Puerto Rican bomba and percussion and song. We should be performance ready by the spring. The Foreign Language Club has its first meeting on Friday. Apart from student led cultural exploration and celebration, we'll soon be in the planning stages for a trip in the twenty twenty five, twenty six school year. The AP Biology class had a successful field trip to the, to Mueller Field Station at the south end of Honeyoy Lake. They learned about the local ecosystem and invasive species, paddled in the canoes through the silver maple and ash wetland, and completed a macro and vertebrate survey. Um, and I know for sure that seniors are starting soon, and the first one that I'm aware of are girls and boys soccer on Monday. Any questions?
Excellent as usual. Thank you.
Thank you so much.
Thank you. Here it is. Yeah. Laura is yours. Yes, come out right up. There we go.
Oh, here you go.
I can do, yeah, I got it. No, thank you.
Okay. Hi.
Hi.
Thank you for your time. As you can see, this is how our temperature is during the Mr. Rob's fifth grade class. The purpose of our experiment is jumping to some different times throughout the day. And we see what parts of the playground are the hottest and we see the difference between the non-shaded areas and the shaded areas.
For that? You're for four. Okay.
Hi, I'm Cora.
And I'm Jim.
Hi.
So these are the trip slide I'm telling you. So these are all the places on the playground that we measured the temperature of.
And this is a tool that we need to measure the different temperatures of the playground.
First, we broke up into teams.
And then we tested different places at different times, like on Thursday and Friday.
Finally, we paid Ethan and me while on this presentation, and this is our new playground that we are extremely grateful for.
Um, hi, my name is Waylon.
And I'm Lucy.
Uh, this is what we learned.
We learned that some areas got up to around one hundred and thirty degrees throughout the day.
Um, the April got to one hundred and thirty degrees. And the shade areas got to only sixty and seventy degrees.
The spinny chairs got up to around ninety. We do know that this playground is still safe for us, and we are very, very grateful for it.
My name's Ethan. This this graph shows how high
You can look on the other side, you need to.
Got this one here.
This graph shows how high another temperature got throughout the day.
We learned that they all started around fifty, some got up to one hundred and thirty, and others stayed, others stayed around sixteen, seventy.
The areas without shade got, got hot, and the areas with shade stayed nice and cold.
Hi, I'm Jacob. Uh, what can we do? One thing we can do is plant more trees near the hottest area. We already have some growing, which is great. Another idea that we had is to add a water fountain near the entrance, and there's already a water hose.
Um, what else we can do?
One idea was to add a roof or a cover to the playground when more shade.
We could also add benches under the trees in the shade so that kids have areas to sit on the really hot days.
These are all the groups and people that did this presentation. A bunch of these groups split into five sections and worked very hard on these signs. The show, like this coffee. Thank you for you.
Good to know.
Any questions?
What was the hardest part of doing original research? Sometimes research is easy, reading a book. But you guys did original research.
It kind of took like, we had to do over a period of one, two days to get the information, then about three days to make the presentation, and then like two days to practice it.
Wow, you did fantastic. Wow. Excellent job. You know, I, Dr. Hunter, I think we need to have our director facilities take a look at the water line.
So what surprised you about your research? I was, I was pretty surprised by the temperature difference. Was there anything that surprised you?
Probably the temperature difference.
Did you think it was going to be that warm?
Not really.
Did you guys develop a hypothesis first?
Yeah.
Yeah. So how did that, how did, how did your research match your hypothesis? Did you prove your hypothesis or, or not?
It could be a bit.
Yeah. So what was your hypothesis? Did you all have different?
Some areas got hotter than the others.
But the metal and glass were some of the hottest areas. Where was?
I was surprised that the playground equipment got hotter than the basketball court.
Yeah.
We were surprised by that, too. Yeah. Because of the black top. Right. Yeah, and the black top, I think, topped out around one ten or so. Yeah, so for the plastic to, to get hotter than that was surprising.
That's the place to go in the winter.
Yeah. The irony of all.
Yes, I know.
I have a question. What was your favorite part of the playground? I'm exploring for you.
My favorite part of the playground was probably either the spinny chairs or the spinny like thing.
Uh, mine is probably like the monkey bars and like the swing, swing hammock.
My favorite part of the playground was probably either like in like the main playground, like those like the sports courts. I like that and the monkey bars.
I like the monkey bars and the swing.
I like the spinning hammock. Friends, the monkey bar.
Well, thank you for commenting.
Thank you so much.
Fantastic job.
Thank you for your time. We appreciate it.
Thank you. Greatly good. Ready? Yeah, all right. Oh, yeah. That one first, Lakers first. Yeah, let's do that. Just. So I think you guys have the agenda in your packet and stuff like that. So the hockey team, um, would like to go away for an overnight trip again out to Syracuse area. Um, they did that last year. It was a really good experience for them. They had a couple of good games. Uh, we're trying to make sure that the games that we are playing are competitive games and, uh, gives us a good chance. So it's a good place for us to go. It's a good team bonding, um, atmosphere and things like that. Um, the Booster Club, the Laker Booster Club does a lot of fundraising and putting things together to help support the trip. And they do a lot of extra things for the, for the team when they're on the trip and things like that, as far as the food and, and extra times like that. So really just looking for approval to do the one night trip, um, out there and, uh, hopefully some competitive games. So I saw it in the itinerary, in the, uh, back at the itinerary and that fundraising. Everything's pretty well set. Yep, yep, they should be all good. Good. Just looking for the approval and then we can hook the hotel rooms and do it outside. So any questions? Anybody have any further questions? And I think that retain motion in the hiking trip. We're the team, two thirty is to us. We go on December twenty, twenty first. Sir. Hold on there. All right. Any votes? You're off and planning. All right. So we're going to do an update, Go Blue K-12 team. Um, I don't know where we're standing up there. I have it. So Chrissy's on Zoom, I believe. So she said she would, she would interject if we were saying something wrong. Uh, otherwise she said we could handle it. So she, she'll jump in if she needs to. Um, but first of all, you know, I want to thank, um, obviously your K-12 team. We real, in the middle school, high school, we really haven't had a, a culture and climate team, um, a positive, um, team that works together. So we kind of created this last year and really took a lot of time last year as, as, as a staff, uh, to kind of come up with some concepts, some core values, um, and try to connect it to the elementary school. Um, so we worked really hard to do that. Um, and then this past August, September, the beginning of the year, we had our first K-12, uh, Go Blue Committee meeting. Um, so trying to align things a lot, K-12. Um, so students are hearing the same things when they enter kindergarten to when they graduate in twelfth grade. Um, so that's really was our goal. We felt like there was a lot of things, K-five. Um, and then as they transitioned to sixth grade, it kind of dropped off as far as the common language and things like that and expectations. So, um, so we're using our, our common, our, our core values of being, being respectful, being responsible, and being safe. Um, and then our Go Blue traits, um, that they're, they learn in elementary and carry on up here. So I do want to thank the staff members and people that were involved in that. Um, it, it was a lot of work, a lot of legwork, and especially in the middle school, high school, to get it going, um, last year. But I think we're in a good spot. Uh, we have a really established team and we're able to put together a lot of things and move forward with that. So, um, definitely want to thank everyone for doing that. So in there, the vision, uh, we kind of established a Go Blue vision, uh, basically the foundation of our school's culture, uh, is based on the core values, the traits. Um, and then we're committed to the school and community wide collaboration, uh, to support a positive culture, climate, and decision making for all students and staff PK through twelve. Um, so we kind of came up with that vision, um, as a group and decided to, to share that, to have that as our common thing, K-12. So we're all kind of focused on the same thing and talk about the same language and have that clear vision when we talk. Uh, any of you that were here the first day of school, you saw the Go Blue Unity. Um, all staff, they have a Go Blue shirt. We wear them every, the first Wednesday of every, every month. Um, so we just had them on last Wednesday. So that's team leader meeting in the bottom and the elementary staff up on top wearing their Go Blue shirts. But, um, it was great to see the first day of school, all of our staff members wearing Go Blue shirts and really supporting that, um, and, and encouraging and cheering on our students as they enter the building. And I think it's good to show that we're, we're supporting each other and working together and kind of all on the same page when it comes to that. So I think it's good for the students to see that as well as our community, um, just that we're all, all united and unified K-12 across the district. Um, so that's one area there. Uh, we also have a Go Blue store, uh, that people can go in and they can buy some additional gear and things like that. So they don't, if they don't want to wear the same shirt once a month, they can get another shirt and things like that. Um, we do, Rob, Rob Antonucci, obviously helped put it together and things like that. So, you know, thanks for, for Rob putting it together. So we have that as well. Um, we were able to get one shirt last year and then we had the blue shirt this year. So they do have two shirts that they were donated. Um, they were donated, Megan Kentucky on the donation card of it.
Yeah, so our latest round that we brought for you tonight, so you each have a shirt that you can have, um, is from our class of twenty twenty four. So they really wanted to, with their remaining balance, contribute to show some gratitude, some appreciation for all the staff. So that was their donation.
Uh, Go Blue K-12 bulletin. Uh, one thing we really wanted to make sure that we were doing is communicating to, to the community on what's going on in our buildings across the K-12. Um, so that, and we did just put our first one out last Friday. Once we got through some technological issues, uh, it worked at first. There was some issues with it because it was only for Geneseal email addresses, but we figured it out. Uh, got it working. Uh, but it's a good tool just for us to communicate. Um, in there, there's our, our Students of the Month, our Staff Spotlight, which is great. We'll talk a little bit about that. Um, just resources for, for parents in the community to use and research on different areas. Um, ways for they can talk to their, their students at home and their children at home on, on bullying and, and different things like that. So there's a lot of resources in there, uh, that really will help them out and support our initiatives, um, when we're talking about that. There's, there's dates in there, uh, that about our Go Blue assemblies, uh, different things like that are in there as well. So they can see the important dates coming up, um, that really support this initiative. Uh, so I mentioned the staff spotlight. So once a month, uh, we have a staff member and they're, they're nominated by their colleagues. All right, so this is colleagues nominating colleagues, uh, first for what they do in our building every day. Um, so we had our first ones, our last, um, just came out recently was Mr. Morons in the middle school, high school, and Mrs. Wilcox from Shinnon Elementary School. Um, but again, staff nominating staff for what they're doing, going above and beyond and, and supporting our students. So, um, that was a big part of it. But then we also told them that we're going to do some interviews and ask them some questions. Um, so that's in there as well. So some questions in general about some, some things, so to get to know them a little bit better, um, as a community. So that's in there. Um, our, our Students of the Month, that's just our, our process and how we handle it. Um, but we, we hand that out. Uh, Pizza Paul's gives out the free pizza. And then, uh, they'll be going to Rotary and just getting one student from, uh, the senior class and things like that will be going there. So we're working on that and, and getting that out there. K-12 Traits of the Month. Um, really, our K-12 Traits of the Month, they're aligned with Character Strong. Character Strong was an initiative that we brought in here the last couple of years. And last year, we really implemented it across the district. Um, so we kind of aligned the traits, um, with, with the character, strong scope and seize sequence. So, um, this month is excellence and, and things like that. So we're really talking about excellence, what it looks like in the classroom, um, and how they can look many different ways. Um, and we encourage teachers to have those conversations with students throughout the, throughout the month of October of excellence, what it looks like, um, different things are happening. Uh, Go Blue Cards. Uh, this has been a, a big thing in the elementary coming up through. They've always had their Go Blue cards down there and they get nominated and they get on walls and do different things. Um, so that's still going on down there. We've also created one up here in the middle school, high school. Uh, so staff can nominate a student, um, based on any trait in there, uh, any Go Blue trait. It doesn't have to be the one for that month. It could be one that's a trait that we're looking for in, in November, December. Uh, so they'll kind of write a little message on there. Um, tell the student that they did that, and then they will also drop it off in the middle school, high school office. And we're tracking that and seeing how that goes. And then we're working on handing them back to the students in different ways. This, this month, they got them back in like homeroom period. We're also times we'll go around and hand them out and recognize them for what they did. Um, so it's just a way for us to, to recognize the students who are doing a good job, uh, fault, doing our Go Blue traits and things like that, which are a little bit different across the board. But again, they, they loved them in the elementary school. And so we kind of are keeping them going here in the middle school, high school, just to have that support. Uh, the Behavior Handbook, so I hit, those are, that's what I handed out just so you can look at it. Um, obviously you're not going to read through it. That's pretty small up here, so I just wanted to give you a copy that you can look at. Um, it's really just the expectations, being safe, being respectful, being responsible, a, and the traits and what it looks like in different areas. Um, one thing we're always trying to do is, it's not just in the classroom. It's in the hallways, in the bathrooms, in the gymnasium, in the auditorium. Um, what, what does that look like? What does being safe looks like? In, in one room may be different than another room and another area. So those are the conversations we had. Um, and we've tried to progress it as long as you see the elementary has some pictures and things like that. And as you get to middle school, high school, those pictures kind of disappear on, on that matrix. Um, but that's in there and stuff like that, just for you to kind of peruse and look at, um, so you understand that. But that's something that we go over, um, and, uh, try to reiterate it as much as we can. Uh, the signage, you'll see a lot of signage around the hallway if you walk around a little bit. Um, that's just an example of one that, uh, is in the hallway and things like that. Um, we hung a lot of those up. We just got some new ones up as you, uh, walk in the, in the school out there by the front foyer. Be safe, be respectful, be responsible. Um, we have that out there. There, there's some in the elementary and in the, the middle school, high school. Like outside the cafeteria, we have the Go Blue traits listed out there across the wall, just so it's, it's visible. It's out there. Um, students are seeing it constantly on an ongoing basis. Um, so that's hopefully, uh, reiterating the message a little bit. All right, so those are a lot of things there. Um, then we have some new initiatives that we're really working on this year, um, trying to implement. And I'll, I can talk a little bit about these.
Yeah, one of the great things about Geneseal is that we are in one building. We are K-12, and we need to take advantage of that and reinvest in each other. And so we've really tried in the last year or two to establish some traditional pieces where we are collaborating between high school and elementary. And so one thing that we've done now, we're entering our second full year of doing this, is Kinder Senior Events. Three times throughout the year, our seniors go down and have a planned activity among the different kindergarten classrooms. And a couple of weeks, we're going down to make some pumpkin crafts. We'll do something, hot cocoa and board games in the winter. Um, they'll go down and do another spring outdoor activity. And it's really great then to watch the seniors walk through the hallway on that moving update and their capping gown. And all the little ones are out there, oh, I know that one. I know that, you know, it just reinforces that, um, we should know each other because we're a small district, but that's a good thing. And so we're also launching our Big Blue, Little Blue program. So this is more of a Big Sister, Big Brother type program. It's a mentoring program. It's a more targeted, um, matching between a big who's in ninth through twelfth grade and a little who's in K through five. And we have just started with our first introduction meeting for anyone interested in becoming a big. And we had about forty-five high schoolers there and many more that have since reached out and really want to apply to become one. And so that process will be, um, since it's a serious commitment and, and we need to take that seriously. It'll be an application, an interview process, a training, and we'll rely on our mental health team and administration, K-12, to go through those train, the training with the bigs so that they know what to expect. And they'll send letters introducing themselves to parents, classroom teachers, the little. Um, then we'll start meeting around Thanksgiving and carry out one meeting a week until April. So that, we're pretty excited about launching that. And we'll also continue to do things like helping out with Go Blue Days in the Elementary Winter Fest, um, that Christie is starting this year. And really, any way we can, we try and just walk the fifty feet down to the elementary and make those connections. We've transitioned our Wellness Days. That's again, something new that we've added in the last few years to our Go Blue Days. So middle school will continue to have two, high school will have two. We're trying to pair some of those with Career Day mornings. And then we will, we're anticipating that we can have two Go Blue themed assemblies. We don't get the luxury of having the monthly assemblies as the elementary does, but we're trying to be thoughtful about bringing in a guest speaker or doing something that we can connect to one of our traits at least twice a year. And then our pep rallies will integrate and support Go Blue. So for instance, in the month of September, when we had leadership as our focus trait, we were really trying to encourage, what can you do this week to be a leader? And you're great. Right? Can you put yourself out there? Can you rally the troops? And so we're just trying to as seamlessly and as easily as possible, make this just part of our common language, part of our common expectations, and a K through twelve, um, initiative. And we've heard great things so far. And so this quote is from one of our eleventh grade students who is on building planning team. And this was not prompted or, you know, told to her in any way. This was just a genuine, you know, it feels good to see Go Blue around. It feels good to see a staff united and to see positive things happening. So we're going to keep on with that momentum and build as much as we can throughout the year.
So we really thought it was important to really get this going in the middle school, high school. Um, really try to have a good, positive culture and climate up there, um, for students and, and staff, um, to help be supportive. So we've really been, it, it took, it was a lot of work last year, a lot of meetings, a lot of talking, a lot of working through. So it's, uh, been there, but I think we've really hopefully started to gradually work our way down that path to hopefully create a positive, uh, environment for all students and staff here at, at school. I think, oh, I see. Think that's, yeah. Oh, thank you. So if you have any questions, ask Megan. Gavin, but make sure you get one of your shirts.
Appreciate your hard work on this. This is a big undertaking and it's exciting. It's exciting. It's paying off. K-12 lineups. Yeah, impressive.
So we're with you, Dr. Hunter. Sounds good. When we turn down, he's up by deck. Um, so I think we all knew, I'm sure it's no surprise that Geneseal has a very unique culture. But boy, this is maybe the first time I'm able to define that culture. It, it was always there. Um, people made it grow and made it feel good. Now we can define and really cultivate it. Really good stuff. Thank you. Thank you. There we go. So, uh, Mr. Salatell and I are going to, uh, just briefly speak on three different areas. We're going to talk about a pretty busy September. Um, I'm going to share with the board and with the community that is here and online, uh, first steps for our superintendent search. And then just a quick reminder before we close out, um, regarding key facts for the Board of Education. Uh, first steps for our superintendent search and then just a quick reminder before we close out, um, regarding key facts for the Board of Education. So, um, let me start with a busy September. Uh, we have worked very hard with our administrative team, I shared Coletta. Uh, we put our heads together. We needed to review our hiring process. We needed to fill some gaps and make sure that we were being very efficient. Uh, and making sure that we got to the quality people and made sure that we hired the quality people and then inducted the quality people. So putting our heads together, we, we took some, uh, some time to make sure that we have the right steps in place and now we're ready to activate those steps. Um, the month also included some very significant work. Around safety teams and the analysis of our safety plan. The district safety team met very early this year, um, and we looked at our crisis intervention chart. Uh, the safety team said, we need to make sure that the safety flip chart is accurate. Easy to access and understand, uh, and then in the hands of people. The safety team also said, take some time in the October conference day in order to review this work. And we are taking, we're listening to their recommendation and taking some time, uh, in the October conference day. Uh, and then, um, through the help of our resident expert, um. Kevin Niedermeyer, um, we assembled a group of administrators, John Holt, uh, and, uh, Joe Hopper. To sit down and actually take a deep dive and really dig into, um, our building. I'm sorry, our district safety plan. And Kevin guided us through an analysis. We're now starting to pick. That safety plan apart and put it back together again to make sure that we really have. The right systems and programs and people in the right places before, during, after crises and train for crises. Uh, so a lot of, a lot of good work around the safety plan. Um, we spent some time developing the budget calendar. I'm going to let, um, the audit team, uh, uh, describe. That works. So I'm going to pass that one on. Conference day plan, um. A lot of time and thought went into conference day planning and using the input and ideas from a variety of different resources. You already heard me talk about how we used the safe district safety committee in order to bring together some ideas about what. An effective conference day is. Well, we spent some time, we're in the, with the administrative team. Um, we spent some time with the wellness team and all of, all of these groups. Put together ideas so that we've got an agenda for this Friday that truly is going to hit at some of the most important work. Um, that needs to get done. Not just safety. Uh, important time for wellness and some self-reflection. And then, um, our building principals. Thanks to the work of, um. Christie New and, and Craig, uh, and Megan and Mike Salatell have carved out some time so that we can look at reading, writing. ELA and math and even a little bit of time in the classroom so that people can, uh. Build the ongoing programs that we already, um, already have in place. I was going to talk a little bit about negotiation. I'm going to let Craig pick that up, um, also in his report. My last piece before I turn it over to Mike is I like to think about each month I try to take ten thousand steps. So what did I learn and what did I see during those ten thousand steps? Well, first of all, um. Megan, Christie, Craig and Mike are out there, Owen and John Holt, they're out there all the time. Uh, there wasn't a time when I was out there that one of them, it didn't cross paths with. So we've got people out there, we've got people connecting. So that was my first takeaway of ten thousand steps. Um, my second takeaway was. Always quiet. The hallways are clean. They are decorated with pride and with identity. And boy, that makes you just feel good during any type of work. And just like the hallways are quiet, what I really noticed in the classrooms, the classrooms are noisy, they're active. And you know what? I know teachers don't like to hear that, but that's good. You've got them thinking. You've got them on the edge of their seat. Um, and you can see it. If you just walk, you just see it and you listen. Um, our kids are, um. Are busy and noisy and active. And I think maybe the last thing that I noticed during my piece of the ten thousand steps is I see happy kids. Um, kids say hello and they don't even know who I am and they say hello. Uh, they smile, um, uh, and, um. They let you know that they enjoy being with their teachers and they enjoy what they're doing. Uh, so I've enjoyed my ten thousand steps and. I'll continue in this month as well. Mike?
Sure. It's hard to believe we've already completed five weeks of school and within the building, the quality of work from our staff. When I say staff, eight through twelve, stowards, drivers, everyone, cafeteria monitors. Really it has been an outstanding five weeks and that's due to the efforts of everybody, giving it their very best each and every day. We have really embraced. The idea of being a K through twelve building this year and I want to thank. Megan, Craig, Christie and the rest of the committee and all of staff. For really aligning themselves with this initiative and supporting this initiative. Cause it is very important since we are one building. That we hit, send a consistent message. The quicker students pick it up and it becomes routine at a younger age. The more transitions with them throughout their middle years and high school years. So it's just really quality work. The, the community, the community support this year, I don't know if all of you had an opportunity to go to. New York Pavilion Geneseo Memoirs football game. But in my twenty plus years in Geneseo, I've never seen such a big crowd at an athletic event. And that tells you our community is excited. Every sporting event has received. Many parents, community members, friends come and taking part in it. We know that our drama club is working hard right now. And that those shows will be well attended. The amount of community support we get here at Geneseo is really remarkable. Today I, I spoke with a superintendent and, and who's new and she said to me, she goes, I hope we're Geneseo someday. And that's. What I hope everybody understands that Geneseo is a great place for young people. And it's directly correlated to a supportive community, supportive Board of Education and outstanding work on behalf of the staff. You heard a little while ago, we had students that volunteered for the walk. And Tom, this is the fellow is very thankful of their efforts. Again, getting students to do any type of community service across the state is really a struggle. You want to be home, they want to be on their phones. It's never been an issue here at Geneseo. The big and little program. I don't know about you, Megan, but I maybe thought twenty students. And we're already up over forty and many more students interested. So that's what we talk about school and community. Everybody chipping in, everybody do what they can. We've taken some wonderful field trips already. Much because our community supports those learning opportunities for students, whether it's career days. Whether it's a science trip and our students really get to experience. Learning opportunities that not all school districts offer to their students. So it's just good work on everybody. I'm tremendously looking forward to the rest of the school year. I think the greatness will continue because we have great people in the community and in the building. So thank you for all your support. I appreciate it.
Mike, would you just do like a minute or two? Cause I know you've done some work in New York State and some conferences recently. If you can just do a quick update on that.
Sure. It's coming.
Oh, it's coming up?
But I will do that. Yes.
There we go. So it's coming up. Let's not, let's not get ahead of ourselves. So I wanted to spend, not get ahead of myself. Um, I wanted to spend, uh, a few minutes with the board and the, uh, the community. And just, uh, organizing some of our next steps or first, let's start with first steps before we talk about next steps. In regard to the superintendent search. So there are. Six, um, key first steps. Um, and, um. I'm going to get back to step number one, selecting a consultant in a second. As I go through steps two through six. Um, I'm just going to touch on them, but if you have questions, please break in and make sure that. Um, we're giving you the, the full information in detail for two months. So as we talk about, um, these first steps in superintendent search, um, one of the things that we need to do as a board. Um, before we bring on a consultant is we need to have a conversation about salary range. We'll take a look at what's happening in the region. We'll take a look at, uh, what's happening, uh, in Monroe County and we'll see where, um. Uh, new superintendents are entering so that we have a sense of where we want to begin, uh, that salary range. As a board, we're going to have to make a determination about whether this is going to be an open or closed search. There are. Pluses to each piece and even in a closed search, there's heavy involvement by the community on the front end. And in the closed search, the heavy involvement in the community is in the front end. In the back end, the board does the work. In an open search. There is heavy involvement from the community in the front end and some involvement in the initial interviews. And then the board takes over the final interview process. So we'll go deep into, well, we won't go much deeper, but we'll, we'll dig away. What's the best way for the board and the community to make decisions? So we'll have to decide on whether we're doing an open or closed search. Um, we'll need to think about our search start date. Because once we start that work, the board is going to be heavily involved in reading and interviewing. And spending time looking at, um, what we want to find, uh, in regard to traits. And then, uh, resumes, matching those, uh, traits with resumes in order to get the ideal people in for interviews for our final decision. So I want to take a look at our start date and of course the start date has implications. On when we look for a superintendent start date and we can be looking for superintendent start dates. Uh, as early as March or April, or in the more logical timeframe around July one. The board needs to help guide our perspective in regard to what type of experience are we looking for? In a superintendent, are we looking for a person with business curriculum? Uh, prior superintendent experience, those things are important as we figure out the profile. And then the last preliminary piece is whether the board is looking for an individual to be involved with residency in Gen, Geneseo. Or what consultants call proximity in the Geneseo area. So those are the key first steps. Let me talk a little bit about selecting, uh, a constituent. Um, and there are two venues that we'll work from. Um, there's the consultant venue, but of course there's the BOSI venue. When you, you think about the scope of the search. A consultant brings a regional. A New York State background where our BOSIs. Uh, consultant generally brings primarily a regional background. Well, BOSIs consultant does have New York State connections. Because they frequently are in Albany doing statewide work. As we take a look at the, the breakdown between the consultant and BOSIs, there is a cost differential. We know consultants have fees. And we know that BOSIs comes to us with no cost. That'll be an important consideration as we decide the type of program we want. And the expenditures related to it. The affiliation that each of these, um, consultants bring to, um, their work is also important. Typically consultants represent universities or professional organizations and have deep connections throughout the state and throughout the region. Where our BOSIs friends generally have New York State that connections. If you look at the way consultants and BOSIs run searches, the Board of Education is involved in all stages. And the Board of Education is the final decision maker. If you ask consultants and BOS, BOSIs representatives how reference checks and preliminary work is completed. The reference check is generally done by the consultant, followed up by questions from the Board of Education. So in both instances, references are done prior to an individual coming in to meeting with the Board of Education. So that those references can be reviewed as the credentials are being reviewed. And then finally, as we take a look at how this, um, uh, process is going to be laid out. Uh, the role that Mike and I will play is we'll let the consultant do the work. All around the recruiting and the, um, engineering of questions and developing of, of committees. And Mike and I will serve as a support to the Board of Education. So before I put, quickly click to the next slide, any thoughts about these, this little quick comparison chart?
So do you know throughout New York State? How much of the state is covered? By different BOSIs? Are there pockets that are non-BOSIs areas?
No, state is completely covered by every single one of the BOSIs areas. And of course, the BOSIs superintendents not only know their region and their superintendents. And, um, the up and coming, uh, administrators in their region, but they also have the ability to reach out to their fellow, uh, district superintendents.
No, as we progress, certainly want to take a look at various consultants and what their range of fees may be. Yeah. So we'll. We'll learn more about that as we progress.
We, we will. And I, and, and thank you for reminding me. I'll make sure I do some homework on that so that we can present that information. So it's, it's not just fee or no fee. It's fee and we understand.
We've started, at least with some qualities and co-acts and characteristics. Uh, more work to be done and we certainly have to do via just the board, but clearly begun the, the homework on that part.
So that's good because, uh, as the decision makers, you have to really have that. Understanding of what the traits are of that individual and how it matches. Not just with the vision, which is nice, but with the actual work that needs to get done. All right. That's a good transition. Um, next steps. So, um, I'm going to, uh, spend some time with Mr. Tenario. And he's going to give me some idea about the type of questions and then who to invite for an interview. And we'll, 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 we'll work with a small segment of the board. So it's not just, uh, uh, the president and myself making a decision. So we'll work with a small group of the board. We'll, we'll get people together and we'll make a decision on who to invite in. And then we will interview one or two different options in regard to, so for this search. Um, once we've done those interviews, we'll contract with an individual to complete the search. Once we get a contract, we will build a schedule or a timeline for the search. So that we know how to move through this process and how we can keep our community informed. And how we can keep our business flowing both internally as we drive the work of the district and drive the future of it. And then finally in next steps, um, as you just heard Mr. Tenario say, the board needs to start to begin to develop their vision. And then we need to get out into the community, uh, our teachers, uh, our staff, our community members. To get a sense through surveys on what are these ideal traits of the family. So we'll be moving through the, these next steps. And, um. Oh, I would say within the next two, three weeks, so that we're ready to roll into that.
Dr. Hunter mentioned earlier, uh, some nice accolades the district received. For the first part of last week, not only was the class of two thousand twenty four very generous and thoughtful in getting us shirts. They also represent our school and community very well. We were recently named. A, a top honor roll school for the two thousand twenty four A B, AP. Um, unit, which is really, really impressive. And basically what that means is that. There's three criteria that the AP looks at, one of them being college culture. And that's their goal is forty percent or more of the class two thousand twenty four. Took at least one AP course throughout their high school years. GCS was forty-nine percent. The second was college credit. And basically what that means, the goal is twenty-five percent or higher of the graduating cohort scored a three or higher. On at least one AP exam during high school. GCS was forty-one percent. On at least one AP exam during high school. GCS was forty one percent. The one that is most impressive is category number three. And that involves two percent or more of the graduating cohort took five or more AP exams. During their high school years. At least one of them was taken in the ninth or tenth grade. So the honor roll basically is they break it up into platinum, bronze, gold, silver, all that. The highest is a platinum. And GCS, we scored in that area eighteen percent. And the platinum is eighteen, uh, fifteen percent. So we even exceeded the highest achievers in that area. So really a big kudos to the council staff, the teachers, the parents. And most importantly, the students who really make academics a priority. Those are impressive numbers. We ended up getting the bronze. We missed by one percentage point to silver. Two to three areas, you can tell we are well above one, we are one percentage point below. We'll get there in the future, but really speaks volume to our school district. And the level rigor that students experience as they go through our building. And if you had a chance to look at where the graduates from last year's senior class ended up this fall. Pretty impressive across the board. So good work by all, and it, it could not happen without great community support for all of our academic programs. Cause I truly don't want to lose focus of how many of our students also have an opportunity to, for the career and trades. And go that route. And right out of the gate, get some outstanding jobs. And, and provide great service to our community as well. So we have a well-balanced, balanced educational program. Uh, one that fits the needs for all students and that should be overall goal, not just about AP. Not just about career, it's allowing students to find what works best for them in their future. Goals and endeavors. So good work on that end. Couple of weeks ago, I had the opportunity to meet with other superintendents across the state. Uh, and, and attended a legislature update meeting with New York Senator Shelley Mayer. Who is the chair on the Committee of Education for New York State. And basically, this meeting gives us updates, what we can expect. It begins and starts off with what are the governor's priorities? Certainly it was highlighted, one of the governor's priorities was to the question. Reduce the increase in school spending. And what that means is school spending has continued to decline. So the governor is very interested in exploring ways to reduce that or at least level it off. One of the things that she really looked at was decline in enrollment. So school spending is going up, enrollment's going down. Fortunately here at Geneseo, we don't have that. And it doesn't look like it's projected anytime in the near future. So our role is is staying pretty consistent, which is good news for our community. The other thing that the governor is really looking at is regionalization. And basically what that means for districts to start looking at. Share costs, shared program. There's a big survey that we have to get done by November first that was just recently rolled out by the governor. And it just focuses on that, collecting data from districts across the state, looking at. How, how can costs kind of level off through shared services and different programs? So it'll be interesting where that all ends up. There's two other areas coming out of the governor's office that, that were mentioned, one of them being. If the state does lose federal funding, that will negatively impact schools in New York State for obvious reasons. And of course, you've seen it all over the news and media, a big push for the governor is to ban cell phones. And that, from my understanding, is not going away. There are some other key topics talked about. Uh, more is a group and a unit. One of them being the Rockefeller Foundation Institute report. I'm sure you're familiar with that. The first run is going to be early December. And it was really highlighted to us, don't overreact to the first run. The first run is going to look much different than the second, third, and fourth run. Sometimes in the past, school districts have went after that first run and acted like. The grounds caving in, and then that just creates a lot of turmoil and upset. People in a building worried about their jobs and everything else. So we'll wait to see how it plays out and then make sure our budget meets the needs of our community and students. Second, across the state, and it's not a surprise to anyone in education. There has been increased level support for ESAL students as well as special education needs. And this includes pre-K as well, that they've seen the biggest increase in special education need with pre-K level. So there's a big push for the governor to really explore that and try to support. All the needs that school districts are facing. Another thing that isn't anything new to you is the zero emission busing. So there's a big push to delay the target date. And that many of you have probably read, worried about the infrastructure that's going to be able to hold the emission, zero emission busing. And it was suggested, why don't we look at something in between until we're sure. Our infrastructure can handle this and maybe it's a hybrid approach or whatever it may be. But I think there's a lot to come with that. I think districts aren't panicking now, but they will in the near future. And it's coming and, and. If you don't have things in place right now to meet the needs of that, then, then it'll be troubling for that district. There's also something new came out with the maximum temperature bill, in case you haven't read about that. Any building that's eighty-eight degrees or higher, schools must have air conditioning or other cooling mechanisms. Good thing about Geneseo is we're safe there. I can tell you, the majority of that room, superintendents are really scared. They're in old buildings and eighty-eight is a common day in May and June. So they would have to shut school down. And I, from what I understood from the conversations and comments back and forth, with the structures of their buildings. Really won't even allow easily to put air conditioning in without a significant cost. So we're in good shape there, that is something coming. I think, and maybe some of you can help me out, our large gym is probably the only area right now. That is not air conditioned, not could be wrong there. But, but I'm guessing that is the area, so we would, we would stay open. And then it can't get any older than sixty-five. You heard that too. So, well-balanced there.
San Diego?
Yes, yeah.
Yeah.
Another big park across the state. And the news has highlighted this as well, of math scores are so low across the state. That they're finding many students are departing their high school years without basic math skills, the foundation of math. So there is a big, big concern, much of it based on testing results. And much of it based on skill sets that students are going in for their next chapter lives with that are lacking basic, basic math. So that's a focus that we're probably going to see come down from the state as well. Curriculum concerns were also brought up, the lack of teaching about the Holocaust and nine eleven. Nine eleven was a big discussion that many students in schools learned nothing about it throughout their whole high school. Middle school and elementary years. So I think there's going to be a bigger push for that in the near future as well. And last, uh, there is a push for another smart school bond initiative. And I think it was two thousand fourteen, John, if I recall, was that close?
Or twelve maybe?
Maybe twelve, so a long time ago. Years get confusing to me after so long. Well, one of the things that uh, the new smart bond initiative could look at. Is school safety, which is another dilemma that every school is facing right now. Any questions?
The, uh, there's a study both by the state and BOSI's, I believe, for, for the uh, zero admissions. Do you know where that is?
I have not heard an update on that. It is a hot topic though, I can tell you that. And that was discussed extensively at the meeting, in almost every meeting they've brought up. Much concern.
Mike, did we have the same concerns about math that they did statewide that we've seen in Geneseo?
That's a good question. Our students did perform traditionally, I shouldn't say that. Some courses did. At the high school level, we had some significant good results. Middle school, we were a little down. And, uh, but not. Anything what a lot of districts are going through.
So I wish Christie were, Christie knew we're here because uh, she has recently indicated to me she's doubling down. On her math work in the elementary level. Um, and I'm sure. I think I can say this legitimately, I'm sure she's used good data to make a good decision.
So I hope I answered that well. Upper levels were in good shape. Consistent, middle level, little decline, which was expected, not a shocker. And then elementary, um, they're also, like Dr. Hunter said, putting a lot of work into it.
Just a question too, Mike, in middle school, do most of the students take the test or are allowed to go math now?
That's a problem, and, and for those of you that don't know, it's really, they call it opt-out option for parents. And students where they don't have to take the test.
New York State.
New York State. That's a middle level one. They don't have a choice at the high school level with regions if you want to get your degree. Diplomate regions again. Yes. We saw a little spike again last year.
Oh, really? I thought it was, I'm understanding, I thought we were in the decline.
It, it depends what grade.
Okay, okay.
So, um, that's a problem because really, how reliable is that data? That's the hard part. So all it is, is moving a line really. Just go from here to here, here to here. It's not like a regions exam where every student takes. And we're all on the same measurement.
So again, I was, Christie were here because she could speak in depth. I would just mention that she had indicated to me. That they're using formative assessments, which you're well aware of. Well, I'm not going to bother, uh, but as you are well aware, those formative assessments are done all over. Uh, uh, three, I'm sorry, five, ten, fifteen week periods. So that the teachers are getting an eye on where kids are at in regard to their programs. Which areas they need to go back and reteach, which areas they can go and move forward with. Um, so that's part of what our elementary uh, team leaders, grade level leaders. Uh, and principal are working at uh, in order to sharpen the, the kids' results.
The, the middle level is still much the same, what I read.
Yeah.
Any other questions? Thank you, thank you.
Do we have a last slide or no?
This was that.
This is it? Alright, so I'm going to give you my last slide from the top of my memory. We have a um, project vote tomorrow. Um, and I had three key facts, now I have four key facts, just to remind the board and the community. Key fact number one, the project has um. Significant focus in regard to safety items. Uh, taking care of aging infrastructure and continuing improving, continuous improvement. Of our educational facilities, particularly at the pre-K level. Uh, fact number two, the project's scope was reduced about four million dollars. To a total of twenty-three point eight million dollars, of which seventy-one percent is eligible. Probably, uh, fact number four that I want to make sure people are aware of is that the vote is not only tomorrow. It's from eight AM morning to eight PM in the evening. Uh, for the vote date and the time. And fact number four comes from Gianna. Six thirty, the musical sneak preview of Mama Me. That might be not my light of the day, so I need to be getting in there. Thank you.
Thank you. I um, appreciate both, both the updates. Um, if I, if I could, just kind of pick up on the Go Blue culture and. Um, Dr. Hunter and Mike Salatello's comments. In the last, with, with the capital project vote tomorrow. The last few weeks, I want to thank everybody who has been out in the community. You know, board members and administrators have been shoulder to shoulder. Working together, talking, answering questions. Participating in all of the events and organizational meetings from Juana's and. The sports boosters and the finance boosters and a variety of others. Uh, I know if I were to start mentioning names, I would lose, forget somebody, so I'm just going to say thank you. To all the board members and the administration and the faculty and others who have been working very hard to communicate appropriately. I've heard positive news about the communication materials, the brochures that were sent to all the houses and so on. So thank you all, and I guess that's another example of the, the Go Blue culture. So, thanks. We're there. How did finance update?
Yep, we met before the regular meeting here. Um, had a busy, busy agenda, got through it all. Um, we, we talked about uh, a couple of things that are on our agenda tonight, the reserve transfer, that's, that's not the agenda. Um, we looked at the budget calendar as Dr. Hunter has alluded to, and that's, that's on our agenda here and everybody gets access to that. So Scott and Dr. Hunter have put that together and, and so we've got a nice plan on how to develop next year's budget. Um, we talked briefly about the volunteer fire, I think it's just firefighters, probably ambulance.
Fire and ambulance.
Fire and ambulance exemption. And apparently there was something we didn't quite follow, get through correctly last year. So we've got that corrected and that'll be in place for the, the next tax year. Scott uh, informed us on um, going through his first ST three, that's a report to the state and. Looks like the last one was auto act at first, but getting a little more information, it's, we're in good shape there. Both Dr. Hunter and Scott talked a little about the upcoming negotiations will be with admin and bus drivers and just kind of getting prepared for that. We reviewed the transfers and check warrants, which you will all see. And then um, talked a little about the audit. Overall, the audit was very good. We just went through some of the details of, of course, they have to find a few things and, you know, and, and they did. And, you know, what we're doing about those are, are, you know, basically what we're doing to correct, make those adjustments. And um, then Scott gave us a little bit of a update on just how we're tracking on this year's twenty-four, twenty-five budget. And the video looks so far so good, so.
Okay, busy, isn't it?
Any questions?
Anybody? Okay, great, thank you. Kevin, any update on policy?
Yeah, we met on the sixteenth of September, the meeting came together and we had numerous policies we reviewed in the four thousand, which was basically the. Uh, my job descriptions and, and duties for the superintendent, when the five thousand. Um, section of the policy manual, basically looking at finances, stuff like that. There's a couple of policies that were still outstanding from previous meetings that were lingering and, and taking them into account. And turn them over to uh, asking our attorney. Uh, take a look at it for clarity and proper wording and structure, and I'm absolutely certain that all the bases are covered in those. The uh, first reading of all the policies that we uh, asked for review will be in the next uh, agenda. Um, for that, along with the ones for clarity, I would be returning to the top of the book. We didn't have anything booked for tonight, wanted to make sure that we got everything together as a group about it to the board of board.
Thank you.
Schedules, anything from G C F?
Yes, uh, just under two weeks ago. Uh, the privilege and wonderful opportunity along with Jim Memmott and Cindy Schmidt to go up to Coast Professionals. And accept a check from Coast for our economically disadvantaged students. It was a significant amount, the money raised through their golf tournament that they brought back this September. So we would like to really thank Coast Professionals for their generosity. We're one of three schools that split the proceeds from the golf tournament, Mount Morris, York, and us. The funds that we get from them go to tremendous support of students in the. And no better, not a lot of schools have that, that they can rely on. that they can rely on for their students. So we really appreciate that. Jim and Cindy also did a wonderful job of explaining where a lot of our funds come from. Because not only, there's two components to it. We have the educational component, which supports field trips, different things for K through twelve classrooms. Highlighted in that was used to be the basketball game, we raised a lot of money. The whale watchers taking that over. But we're looking at some other opportunities, maybe this summer to do some things and maybe this winter, whether it's a bowling outing. I do want to say and highlight one of the areas that we generate a tremendous amount of funds from, our retirees, the GFA. So we've had significant contribution from former employees of Geneseo. And I think that speaks volumes, that their experiences here were very good. So on behalf of the school and community, I appreciate GFA looking out for the future as well. So it's just a terrific organization. And whenever you have Jim running it and Cindy telling him what to do. You know that it's a good organization and, and Dan Strange involved and they have a whole others. I don't want to leave other people out. But a lot of people are there to really put together a lot of tremendous good work. So thank GCE for all they do for our teachers and students.
Kevin, for you, I guess, a lot of personnel.
Yeah, a lot of personnel, like that for consent motion from seven point zero two to seven point three two.
Staying from seven oh nine.
Yes, saw that.
Thank you for abstaining. Is it the right way to fulfill your responsibilities?
Any questions on the many personnel points here, the additions and agreements? No, okay. So all in favor? Any opposed? One exception to one. The move, thank you.
Under section eight, your business, I have the consent motion on eight point zero two to eight point zero nine.
Okay, just one quick question on the athletic training. Are they here in, on site for all games and two days a week? Is that my understanding?
They are on site for all varsity contests and maybe for the most part, not for modified stuff, other than football. And then they are here basically once a week for training room hours. Kind of like the Tuesdays for now, just because it seemed to be worth the best. And we try to coincide with a game like Green Days, that seemed to be a lot of games, so she would be here anyways. Which cut down on the transportation piece that parents can add up. That's, she's pretty much here almost every day. But not so many hours in the, in the training piece of it. So a lot of students will go see her during a game. They might go over the sidelines and evaluate if they can do that, what seems to be working there.
Any other questions on new business? All in favor? The move, thank you.
Section nine, the business office, we'd like to have a consent motion of nine point zero two to nine point zero seven.
Any questions on any of these? Alright, all in favor? Any opposed? So moved. There's no executive session that I know of, right? For that. In second, there's no, section ten, a German, the consent motion to adjourn that eight fifteen. Anybody opposed to that?